We can begin with public comment. It looks like we have maybe a smaller number than usual. If anybody's planning to make a public comment, could you just put your name in the chat? And then I will go through my rigmarole if we have public commenters.
Sarah, can I just say that the link on the MERSD site was not working?
Yeah.
They have fewer people.
Yep.
Because they couldn't get on.
We fixed it. We did fix it. So if you know anybody who was trying to get on and they weren't able to, it's working now. We also have, there's 40 B negotiations in Manchester tonight, so that could also be a factor. Also, now that, I don't know, we might just have less people. Okay, nobody in the chat. Is there anybody calling on the phone who would like to make a comment? Okay, so it seems that we have no public comment tonight. And I'll just do my very short chairman's report. So weird to have such a small group. So my report is, spring is here, the sun is shining, our elementary school students are in school full time, our middle and high school students are going back next week, and there is a light at the end of the tunnel. It is all very exciting. I do want to take this opportunity to remind people to stay vigilant about mask wearing, hand washing, social distancing, cooperating with contact tracing, and participating in the pool testing program. These mitigation strategies will help keep our community safe and our children in school. Thanks again for joining us tonight. I know that we have a lot of interesting topics on our agenda. And the first thing we have is our student report. Is he here?
I don't see him. I don't see Lucas on the list.
Lucas. All right.
So I'll keep an eye on the participant list, and if it starts to surge once, because we reposted the link to the web and Facebook and Twitter, I'll let you know if Lucas signs in, and we can just double back if we have to.
Yeah, I'll keep an eye on it, too. That sounds great. And then, oh, I didn't write them down. Next up is the consent agenda, and I forgot to write down the number of the warrants. Avi, do you want to remind us what number warrants we're approving tonight?
Just trying to pull it up right as we speak. Can we one second? Sorry.
That's no problem.
Okay, thank you. It's voucher 1038 and 1039. Sorry for the delay.
That's no problem. And just to, I don't think we had minutes because Gail was not able to get them for this week. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so on the consent agenda tonight, we just have those two warrants, 1038 and 1039. Do I have a motion to approve those vouchers?
I'll make a motion.
Shannon.
Shannon moved.
Annie seconded.
Okay. Annie seconded.
Whatever.
Because she said her name. Any discussion? Okay, I have to do roll call. Annie?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Shannon? I think she said yes. Matt?
Yes.
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, that's the consent agenda, and then we go right into committee reports. Starting with facilities.
This is a Pam thing because we have not met with the school committee. We have a meeting next week, I think, right?
Yes, and we're going to talk about some signage, and we have a meeting in between now and next week to talk a little bit about the signage. So I thought I'd just raise the question tonight. Christina, who is our project manager, is asking us to confirm the name we want on the sign for the memorial school. So we've just assumed all along that we won't be changing or undertaking a name change for the memorial school. I want to confirm that with the school committee, but also pose a question for discussion, which is, well, we may not want to change the formal name of the Memorial Elementary School. Should we, as we undertake these projects, rebrand the signs to have them state that it's a Manchester Essex Regional Memorial School and not the Manchester Memorial School or the Essex Elementary School, given the fact that these are joint projects between the towns of Manchester and Essex to invest in build the buildings and their district schools, they're not town schools. I'm not offering an opinion. I'm just offering up the question for discussion.
Do you mind if I take that offer, Pam?
Sure.
The only, I definitely agree that Manchester Essex Regional School District should be on the signs. I question just about if we include in the name the length that it will get to, as well as possibly confusion, where there's a Manchester Elementary School and an Essex Elementary School. So not like Essex Elementary School subsidiary of MERSD, but something along those lines. I think it would be appropriate. I like the suggestion. I'm trying to think of how to do it in the least wordy and confusing way.
I have an idea.
True.
Maybe they could both keep their names as they are, and then on the signs, just underneath, write an MERSD school. I like that suggestion.
I like that, too. Cut on there, or having the logo or something with some consistent signage, whatever the designers say, but keeping the names.
I had been debating, and I couldn't come up with a way to work Erdman and Cameron as a celebration of into the school name, so I had to drop that. So I'll go with the MERSD.
Okay.
Yeah, I like all these suggestions. When we were trying to sort of brainstorm names, I mean Pam sent out some suggestions, and they just got a little long and cumbersome. But I also think that it was really clear when I first moved here and we were trying to figure out, and there were a lot of community surveys about doing one elementary school or two schools, and people really liked that community identity with their schools. So I think there's some value in keeping that in the name.
Yeah, that's it. The only thing I can say is, I mean, I don't think it would be, but if you combine both, there could be some confusion, like maybe I get to pick what elementary school. I don't know.
Although the more we have specialized programs at the different schools, and we do have children from Manchester attending school in Essex and children from Essex attending school in Manchester, maybe that's not a bad thing.
Take care of that with an MERSD school, because I think there will be a lot of confusion if we have Manchester Essex in both school names. I just think, and that's too long.
And they're housed in those towns. It's reasonable.
Yeah.
So something as simple as MERSD Essex Elementary, MERSD Manchester.
I would just keep them Manchester. Yeah. Memorial School, Manchester Memorial Elementary School, and then on the sign underneath, it can say an MERSD school. And it says the same thing for Essex Elementary, an MERSD school. I mean.
In some ways, it reminds me a little bit of Gloucester, where you've got the Well-Not-Defunct Pigeon Cove School, the East Gloucester School, the West Parish School. So it's more geographic and community name and less of a town.
Well, it can have the, it could have the school name and then the logo underneath.
I agree, Sarah.
I was gonna say, I'm not a brand person, but I work with the brand team. And I think, you know, all of our hospitals have kind of the same logo. So if you could have that logo, visual identifier for the district.
The Hornet. And a Hornet, right there in the left-hand corner.
That's a bigger debate. The Hornet, the seal, or the ME?
Uh.
Or MERSD?
The seal, well, I don't know. I mean, the seal looks kind of official. You could do, you know, whatever the school's name is, an MERSD school, bang, with the seal at the bottom, or the seal at the top and an MERSD at the bottom, you know, whatever. But I just, yeah, the seal would probably look a little bit more official. It might be a little too casual on a, on signage.
So takeaway from this is, yes, we're going to add MERSD onto the sign in a, in a way that honors the traditional name of the school, but tags it as being part of a district. And we'll let the designers play around with the seal, the MERSD, and how to do it. Eric, if you have any friends in your branding department that want to offer a suggestion, we'll take anything we can, we can get. But the designers likely will have some ideas. I'm sure they've dealt with this in other regional schools.
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be that complicated. You can have the seal at the top, you know, I think we have, I think we have signs that have some little kind of pinnacle at the top, and then you put the seal sort of at the top middle. Manchester Memorial Elementary School, big letters in the middle, and then underneath, an MERSD school. And you can do that for both schools. I think it's straightforward. Yeah, Ken, sorry.
Now, I was gonna say, to dive fully into the rabbit hole, can we project forward when we're discussing the name of the New Eagles Nest Playground, what that sign will look like? Or do I have to wait a few months for that?
Well, we can't talk about that. I think you need to wait till I leave, and Annie leaves. Just kidding.
That, that can either come up tonight, or we can wait and tackle it on the 5th, 4th.
I'm gonna call myself for a rabbit hole and leave that to tackle at a future time.
All right. Pam, is that enough discussion on the school name and sign?
Yeah, if you think I captured it, that we want to add the logo or the seal plus an MERSD school, but keeping the name, the traditional name of the school prominent, I think we have enough for the design team. Avi, do you think they'll be able to do what they need to with that? He's probably saying.
Sorry, I was just unmuting. Yes, I think that would be, I think for now, that will definitely take care of it.
Great. Awesome. Finance Committee?
Do we want to just take that when we talk about budget? I mean, we had a good meeting with the two towns. We talked about the all-boards meeting and decided that the issue that was really confusing maybe, or becoming an issue, was apportionment. And so we talked a lot about that. And given what's going on in both towns in terms of town meeting and other issues, we decided to not have the all-boards meeting this spring, but to try to get through our annual town meetings and, you know, address some of the concerns that came up in this whole process earlier in the season, probably beginning of the school year. Does that appear assessment, Matt and Pam? And Sarah, Sarah, you were there as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I thought it was a productive meeting, and we cleared up some things, and we just need to communicate them.
Yeah, and we have some budget updates and more to discuss later on the agenda. So I agree. I think we should just talk about it. We're there.
Yeah.
Yeah. I did see that Lucas was able to get into the meeting, and I'm wondering if we could take a break from our committee reports to hear Lucas's student report. Lucas, if you're there and you're ready to do that.
Sure, yeah. All right, so this Friday, or this week is the last week of quarter three. And so we will, students will be heading into their fourth and final quarter of the school year. For many seniors, this Friday is actually their last day of high school. So they'll be starting their score projects very soon. Because of that, this Friday has been declared Senior Day. So all the current seniors will have the opportunity to come to the school in person and just, you know, have some time to catch up with their teachers and classmates. And so Friday for everyone else, so for grades nine through 11, will be a synchronous day. And just looking at next week, as many of you know probably by now, that we'll be returning to full in-person learning starting next Monday. So both the middle and high school students will be returning in person, except for students who have chosen to continue to remain remote for the rest of the school year. And finally, the spring sports season will officially begin on April 26th, which is the Monday students get back from April vacation. And so we'll be on break the week of the 19th. And that's all I have.
Lucas, thanks for keeping us posted.
Of course.
Always good to hear from you. Do you guys have any questions for Lucas? All right, then we will crank through our agenda, and next up is the Policy Committee. Eric and Teresa, you're up.
So I'm happy to do it, Teresa, and feel free to jump in if you'd like. So we did discuss a couple of things at our last meeting last week. One was the transportation policy, which I think the last time we talked about was in October. We didn't amend the policy because it allowed for a little bit of leeway. So basically, what we would like to recommend is that we expand ridership opportunity from two miles to 1.5 for the elementary school. And then also monitor that ridership from April, oh, so that would be in April 12th, and then monitor that ridership from April 12th through the beginning of May. And if we could, maybe accommodate middle school riders also. That would be under the two-mile radius within that 1.5. So that was one thing that we discussed. And then the other thing was the donation policy. So with, you know, the Essex Elementary Playground project in mind, I know that everyone's very involved and interested in, you know, doing some sort of community build or, you know, supplementing that. We would recommend waiting until the playground is in place and then kind of assessing what's needed and, you know, donations and stuff like that after the fact. So that was kind of the gist of our meeting. Teresa, feel free, please, to jump in, add anything that you think's appropriate.
Sounds good to me. That's good. That sounds good. Is there, do you guys want to have some discussion about that? Or do we need to take any votes, or are we just good to move forward because we're not changing anything substantially?
Do we have a discussion?
Yeah.
I wonder if you could just kind of walk us through the busing policy, not the policy, but just the change and what the implications are, because I thought that we had kept it to because of costs, and I'm just wondering what the impetus was to reconsider and what that will mean in terms of service and then budget.
Avi, could you? Yeah, could you speak to the?
You're flickering in and out, Avi.
Right, hang on. Is that any better?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, yes, I think we are on the same page about, you know, what was originally a concern about potential cost increases that could come with additional buses back when we were trying to space out students to a point that might have maybe doubled or tripled our need. I think what we found out at the time is that there aren't really additional buses to be had to begin with. And so it wasn't just a cost issue, it was an availability issue. So the current proposal that we're discussing and that we talked about in the subcommittee meeting is designed to make sure that we don't have to add additional buses, because we don't believe we would necessarily be able to get that capacity and serve those students. And so all the notices we've sent to families about why we had the 2.0 miles was basically to say because of capacity. So elementary ridership and registrations are pretty low. And understandably, because they're kind of closer to home. And so for that reason, it looks like we do have the capacity to bring the ridership limit down to 1.5 miles. And I think we've received a, I would say, a small number, but a consistent number, you know, maybe five or six families for whom obviously transportation is a significant logistical need. And we're obviously, have always provided, trying to do our best to make sure families have a good way to get to school. So I think if we have that capacity, it would seem unnecessary to just have the bus be partially empty. So I think, I feel very comfortable based on the ridership and registration, that we can bring it back down to 1.5 miles for elementary. But middle school, high school is definitely a TBD, a lot more riders who have registered. And we still need to see, in any given year, there's a certain number who register just to have that registration, but may not ride. So I think it's still too early to say on that one.
Is there a time component to this? Is this only for this fiscal year? And then in the beginning of next year, you're going to reassess? And is there, who's paying for the bus? Is anyone inside of 2.0 miles paying? Or is it the 1.5? Can you just give us a sense of that?
Yep. So I think the general thing we've been talking about, anyone else, you can chime in if they feel differently. But we've been basically talking about this as a single-year policy that we originally changed to 2.0 and that we would be changing back now. It's just, this is, you know, the year where everything's different. And I think the goal would be to be back to normal next year, although that still remains to be seen. So we'll have to just see what's happening as we get closer to the year. So that's the first question. In terms of who's paying, in the past, we never charged a fee unless someone was closer than 1.5 miles. The reason being that we get reimbursed by the Department of Ed for 1.5 miles and above. If we charge a fee, we're essentially, you know, handing back that money, and it just doesn't make any sense. There's nothing gained. And, and so, and fee creates a burden, and it also, you know, we see that with fees, sometimes it impacts ridership anyway. So it would be no fees going on with this for the rest of the year, and we'd have to revisit that next year if we want to go below 1.5 miles.
Thank you. Then I have some questions on the.
Wait, can I ask for a quick clarification on that? I'm confused. And you know, this busing thing always confuses me. It has always, like, thrown me for a loop. So who is paying a fee? Who's going to pay a fee this year? I know we're changing.
Nobody.
So nobody, even within 1.5?
Yeah, because we have never charged a fee for 1.5 and above. We've only charged a fee of 1.5 and below. And at this point, there is no plan or no proposal, no recommendation to go below 1.5. And the reason that's, well, yeah, I mean, yeah, and the Department of Ed reimburses 1.5 and above because it's kind of expected for regionals that you go a little bit over and above the 2.0. That's more common, and that's required by law. And so I think they're trying to incentivize regional school districts to consider the fact that they're a little more geographically diverse. So I think it's a win-win.
Playground?
Can we just close the loop on the busing policy expansion? Is the committee okay with the proposal on the table, which is we expand ridership at the elementary beginning next week to everyone within a mile and a half? And watch the first two weeks of full in-person at the middle and high school and try to determine with, for a recommendation on May 4th as to whether we could expand at the middle high school or if we're already at capacity.
I'm good with that plan. I'm especially, oh, I'm especially glad that we're able to expand it for the elementary school students a little bit, because I know that there were a few parents who were really having a hard time and hoping we would be able to do that for them. But I think it makes sense to wait on the middle high school.
And I want to just actually, you know, communicate some caution to any families who are on the line. It, I'm not seeing that we have that pathway yet for middle school, high school. Maybe as Eric said, we can do middle school only, but it's not as clear. So I just, I know families might see what's happening with elementary and get excited that we can do that. It's really not known. And that was really the reason we changed the policy all along, as we knew there would be a bottleneck at the middle school, high school. So we'll do what we can. We definitely want to help if we can. So that will be the goal, to take a look.
Any other discussion of the transportation? Okay, I know Annie wanted to jump into playground.
Yeah, I just want to say back what I think I heard, which is that we go forward with the playground as designed, so design and construction, and then after the fact, we revisit, the committee revisits the proposed additional design, which would be funded by donations. And from that point forward, you would make those decisions through this committee on what the additional features would be. Is that what you agreed to, or you came up with? That's my understanding on the report out, yes.
Okay.
Do, do we want to go back to the busing and just everybody give an okay on that and then move on? Or do you need anything from all of us on the busing before we move on?
Do you want me to do a roll call on the busing, Pam?
You don't need to, because the policy allows for an annual review.
Okay.
And determination. So it's already baked into the policy that we would administratively determine it each year. We're just notifying you and asking if there are any concerns with going with the split.
Okay, fair enough.
Yep.
Seems like we had consensus going forward. Okay, so Annie got confirmation. Any other, anything else on the playground? We talked a lot about the two circles design, and it's my understanding that the smaller group was able to work out a design that everybody was happy with, that didn't require changes in the existing plan. So we're good?
Aside from the Essex component of the discussion, I think the big picture on the donations policy is that we need to reconcile some conflicts between multiple policies that we have. And I think it was the intent of the group, and if I'm getting this wrong, please correct me, that we go forward and develop a process by which people can submit requests for plans and that there can be objective criteria so that there's consistency over time as to what, what and how things get presented to school committee and accepted. So that's to come.
That's my understanding and part of why we decided to hold on that. And, you know, the other thing, too, that we did talk about is, this is an enormous thing that we're doing, and it's an exciting, wonderful thing. Let's let it happen, see what it looks like, and then go from there. So that we're being fair to the donors and we're being fair to everybody, you know, involved, really. Let's get it in, see how awesome it is, get really excited about it, and then look at what, what needs to come next.
The only concern I have with that kind of two-phase approach, and I think it was raised, is there's going to be disruption for the first phase in getting it in. And I think what I'm hearing is, if it all goes in, as CompAN designed, and then at some point in time afterwards, we talk about seating, possibly trash containers, the pads. Is that what we're talking to now? That it would be phased in two stages like that? Is that what the Policy Committee?
My understanding of our discussion was that, and actually, we emailed a little about this, too, is that anything that was in that initial presentation, so there's CompAN's design, but also I was looking for a little refresher on whether they're working, is it, you know, everything that's included in there in that initial, what, 300,000 that we put forth toward this, that we move forward with, that's already been approved in its entirety.
Okay.
And then in the meantime, we're dealing with reconciling the policies. And then after that, looking at taking in for, you know, recommendations for more based on donation. Stop me if I'm getting this wrong, Eric.
No, I agree. That's what I got, too, Teresa.
Okay, and I guess I'm probably more confused around timing on, like, do we think that, because I believe the order's already placed with CompAN, and they're rolling on it. And I don't know, is, there's a date of, I'm making this up, July 2021, they're going to begin installing. And then I just am unclear on the timeline for what that policy review and edit might be. And the one thing that kind of concerns me with the policy edit review is that they're trying to, this has a unique situation of there was some supposed, there's money that may be donated from the Essex Elementary PTO that existed and was set aside prior to the district even forming. So I don't know if we're going to, if a policy decision, how many other of those gifts from the past may exist.
I think that's why we're trying to take all of that. And we came to the table last week, and we're like, I think we need to look more closely at what all the different pieces are before we do that. Because the concern that we had as a group was consistency. Like, this is a unique circumstance and everything, but there's always going to be an argument for, you know, a really strong desire to do something. And so we want to make sure that we're setting up future boards, you know, future committees for the ability to apply it consistently. So that's why, like, taking the time to actually look into it more fully.
Avi, can you brief us on the timeline? Because I thought I saw, and if Jason's on the line, he can please join the conversation. I think I saw that this is moving very quickly. So it won't be end of summer, it may be middle of spring.
Yeah, Jason's here, and I'll let him talk in detail.
Yeah, like, yeah, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Like, yeah. So, um, the good news is, is the timeline has been accelerated, um, quite a bit. To a point, we're looking to begin, um, over April vacation, um, which includes, which again works out great. Cause obviously there's no students there. So we're looking at, you know, mobilizing, putting up safety fencing, um, receiving the equipment and doing the excavation work over April break. So, um, so again, that's, that's really, really good news. And again, it works out great because, you know, obviously it's going to be a little, um, difficult because we're going to have students there for a lot of the project, but a lot of the heavy lifting will be over April break. So, um, and again, the week of, um, after April break is when we'll probably start putting up the equipment. And right now, if, you know, all goes well, fingers crossed, no delays, no weather issues. We're looking to have, you know, completion probably end of May, first week of June.
Yay.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you. That's exciting.
Jason, can, can I ask a question? I don't want to put you on the spot. So if you don't know, just say, I don't know.
Yeah.
The current guidelines for playgrounds, will the kids be able to use it? If it's, if it's, um, cleared for use before the end of the year, or are we still on a stand down?
You know, so right now it's, you know, it's a little bit of a kind of, um, like a gray area, you know? Because the equipment should be wiped down kind of after each recess. You know, so, you know, they're kind of considering that, kind of a cohort, if you will. So each recess, we should be, you know, wiping it down. But I, I've kind of noticed a lot of guidelines are changing, so I can kind of look more into the, the playground aspect. Because, you know, I'll look into that more because we haven't had a playground this year in both schools to really, you know, kind of, and for, you know, we've had some, you know, like the preschools and whatnot, we, we've had a little bit of equipment, but, you know, nothing like this. So I'll certainly kind of, um, follow up on those guidelines and report back.
Thanks. Cause as, as, I'm sure as soon as we start to see the things going up, people are going to be anxious to want to use it. And we just have the right answers. Happy to help without reach to any other districts too, to do what they're doing.
Yep.
If I can add one other question to, while we have Jason, while we've got you and Pam and Abby, stop me if not appropriate. But one thing I guess I'd, I'd be curious to hear from Jason is, is these things are coming closer to reality for the, the eels nested Essex Elementary and the Memorial School Playground area or areas is kind of, we've talked about equity of amenities and just, do they have seating? Do they have, you know, are there trash? Kind of what that is? And if, I guess I, I would ask if, if you can be almost experts on that and be prepared to educate or make recommendations on is, you know, are there items lacking from one or the others that currently exist and how we'd handle that? I mean, even down to the point of my half joking comment about the playground, any signs or rules for the playground wiped down after reuse or whatever?
Oh, sorry. Just let you know, Ken, so the, so right now the playground design as is, does not call for any seats or trash cans. And I know that's kind of what the, we were kind of discussing with the fundraising. You know, we're looking to at least have the area, you know, excavated and, and ready. But right now it's not calling for any specific, you know, benches or trash or whatnot.
The only thing I would just add to that is, you know, I think looking at some of the proposals for what the designs could be, uh, based on the kind of, um, creative and exciting work that, that the subcommittee members have been looking into. If you have those donations, you know, that's, I think, something that will come back for school committee. In the event that something like that doesn't move forward, I think it goes without saying that our operating budget would pick up the necessary types of things that we need to have, just to make the space functional clearly. Trash cans, um, some element of seating. And so, and those can be done in a very economical way. I think it's when you start getting into a more holistic design, um, and, and there's all sorts of different levels of seating where, where I think it makes sense to start looking at, you know, are there more, um, substantial proposals for design that we want to consider? If those don't end up happening, we'll make sure we get all the necessary amenities taken care of within the operating budget. Although it, it might be a little bit more, um, focused on utility than overall, um, you know, making it part of the integrated design.
Thank you both.
Thanks, everybody. I'm so excited for the playground to go in. And I'm sure that, um, we'll find a way for the kids to use it and safe, safely. Even if it can't be mass use at recess, I'm sure that we can figure out something. Uh, not the, I mean, the royal we, I'm clearly not on the team of figuring out who's using the playground. Um, moving on.
Can I?
More?
One bug, bug in the committee's ear on facilities. As we, I think Annie said, May 5th, we're going to start to, uh, think about the changeover and new board members coming on and some exiting. That means there'll probably be some need to change, uh, subcommittee roles. At our collaboration meeting, um, last week, we began to talk about the multi, well, not a multi-year, an 18-month plan for field replacement that takes on Highland Field and Brook Street. So the thinking there, um, and this is for the consideration of the committee, is that the facilities subgroup, uh, take on a, a little bit of the responsibility of working with some school side people and town side people on determining, um, cost sharing timelines and, uh, timeline for replacement. So we might want to start thinking sooner rather than later, because I think the group would like to get going later this spring on the planning process about who may be taking over those seats on the facilities subgroup.
So Shannon and I are staying on the school building committee, right? And the facilities is going to be a separate thing or how's that going to work?
I would think the school committee should maintain a facilities, a committee, we're calling it elementary facilities, but really it should sit as a facilities group, looking and managing the capital plan, working collaboratively with the towns on those types of items.
But that would be a separate entity from the MSBC that Annie and I are going to remain on.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And then maybe the new people who are on the, the facilities group, whoever moves into those positions, should there be another building project in the future, they would be in place to roll onto that situation?
I would recommend that because Annie and Shannon won't be technically part of school committee, but still can participate and report back, that whoever takes the facility's seat shadows them for the remainder of the SBC. So they become familiar with some of the language and the process, um, so that they are, they have a sense of what they're getting into when the next, uh, project comes up, which we're looking at as early as 24, 25 to begin an SOI, depending on the closeout of the Memorial School. I think we really benefited from Annie's expertise, um, in having Sarah on the committee because they had gone through it before. We retained several members from the, from the middle high school group. It, it's really valuable and experience to have.
So you'd like people, the new facilities people to shout out Annie and Shannon for that wrap-up of this building project?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So everybody think about that if you're interested in that. And we already have Matt and Teresa shadowing Annie and Shannon on the finance committee, which I think has been really, really good. Um, so maybe we can decide who, it's hard to decide who that's going to be before we know who the new people on the committee are, but.
Can I share a thought on that?
Yes.
Just something to move forward with. I, I wonder if we maybe ought to consider, um, a bigger discussion about the, the committee assignments though, because I have some lingering concern about, um, people whose terms end at the same time.
Yep.
In the same committees, because we're going to be in the same position that we are with Annie and Shannon leaving if Matt and I leave at the same time. Or if the new people come in and fill the two seats together, it's going to be, it's just going to be the same thing. So I have concerns about that. Um, so just something to be thinking on, maybe for a future discussion about our, how we really lay this out.
Yeah. Usually we reshuffle the subcommittee, uh, the subcommittees at the, the, right after. So we have elections and then we have our first meeting with the new people. And that's usually when we, when do we have the reorganization? Over the summer?
Supposed to be the first meeting after the election.
The first meet, and when's the election?
The 18th. We have a meeting on that night.
May 10th.
May 10th.
I thought it was 18th.
It's different in the towns.
Yeah.
So May 10th in Essex and May 18th in Manchester. So it won't be until the end of May or June before we really have our, um, our reorganization. So we'll probably, it would probably be best if people from the current group could go on to the facilities committee, but maybe not people whose terms expire at the same time. All right. Teresa, that was a really good point. Thank you for pointing that out. But we can talk about that on May 5th. Yes?
Yes. Just wanted to put it on the radar screen that there's a lot that's, and this will come up again when I do my update. There's a lot that's happening in the interim this year. Where typically we're winding down a year. There's a lot that's starting up in May and June, um, or that we're trying to close out for this year. So I'm going to have another ask for the committee.
Okay.
When I do my update.
All right. Um, any other discussion on the donations policy or the busing policy or a policy committee in general?
I like the two changes that you, or not changes, I like the two suggestions that you're, the policy committee made.
Yeah. Good.
Okay. I think we need to annually, so I'm glad to hear that. That's really great.
I think we have consensus on that. So that's awesome. Um, Ken, do you want to say anything about negotiations? I know we're talking about the MOA later under continued business.
Well, I think let's just cover it under continued business.
Uh, I agree. Okay. So we will bump that off. And Pam, it's, um, up to your, your report.
Okay. I've got a bit to cover, but I think I can do it briefly. And if I'm not going fast enough, just stop me and tell me to speed up or you know enough about this topic. You don't need to hear it again. Um, I'm going to start with our, uh, monthly COVID report. And this is where we might be able to pick up a little time. Um, things have not changed very much since our last COVID report. The, uh, COVID metrics remain solid. The, it, the slide will load momentarily. Essex is yellow, uh, Manchester is green, uh, but we still have no, um, evidence of any in-school spread. So we are still, um, marching forward. As we updated our numbers, um, this month, we saw that, uh, we went from a just under 1% student positivity rate to date, which means from October through the end of March, uh, with about, now we're at 1.1% um, and an 8.5% positive rate of staff reported to date. Again, October through the end of March, uh, this is the total number of people on this slide. We shows you, we've had 15 students and 17 staff members who have, um, notified us that they are positive. Again, what we're tracking truly is what happens, um, in school and whether or not the environment that students are learning in and teachers are working in, um, is safe? Um, or is it adding to spread? And we have, again, drawn the conclusion that we don't have any internal spread because you'll see, uh, student close contact with staff and staff close contact with one another. Student to student contact is continuing to yield a zero throughout, um, except for, uh, one student in December. So our control measures are working and a reminder, we have our social distancing, our masking. Um, we have our contact tracing. We have the med bot, uh, preemptive that happens every morning. Um, and we've added the, uh, um, pool testing to the middle high school. Uh, for us, pool testing continues to be a bit of a struggle to get the buy-in. We're working with a 48% um, high school student participation rate and a 44% middle school student participation rate. Our goal is 75%. The good news is we will not have to expend any dollars for this program from now until the end of the year. The state will be covering it. So, well, we're doing the best we can to encourage people to enroll. Um, I would recommend we just continue to the end of the year because it is being provided to us for free. The staff, on the other hand, see it as a real value add. Sorry about that. And we have 97% participation. Sorry about that. Still a landline. Um, one thing we did want to note is that we have had one positive pool to date. So if you remember the, the concept behind the pool testing is we have, uh, groups of approximately 20 students self-swabbing and submitting, uh, blind samples to a lab. If the pool has a positive within it, that whole group is then, um, subjected to a secondary test to identify patient zero. I've given this, um, positive a technical because, uh, one of the rules of thumb is that if you know you have a positive COVID, uh, individual, you don't have them participate in the pool testing. So a student participated inadvertently, even though they had notified the nurse that they were positive. So they knew going in that they had a positive batch of who the student was. But the process worked, uh, the follow-through was done and there were no other students within that pool that were identified as positive. So yes, we've had one positive pool, um, but our, our great nursing team was ahead of it anyway. And they kind of learned how to, uh, manage that process going forward. And again, state funding, um, is with us through the end of the year, so we plan to continue. Uh, just a quick look at the COVID metrics, um, in our area. This is from last Thursday's map. You'll see that we have no, uh, K-Ban communities in red. Majority of them are in the yellow or the green, um, and a few remain, um, in the gray. So this impacts our interscholastic sports, but it also gives us a sense of where, um, where the general region is, uh, with the virus spread. Staffing, yep, go ahead, go ahead, Teresa.
A quick question about the pool testing?
Yep.
And I may have missed something big here, but if there was a student who was testing positive, how are they, and knew it? How are they at school to participate in the?
It all happened at the, almost one thing on top of each other.
Okay.
Okay. Took it, notified the nurse that they found out that he was positive. And then they didn't pull the sample, which is what they were instructed to do.
Got it. Thank you.
So, and no contacts out of it.
Got it. Thank you.
Staffing, um, still an ongoing challenge. I, I'm sure if you've spoken to anybody who has kids in school, you know that we're dealing with a high level of attendance due to the COVID vaccine. People are out, um, for a day, you know, if you had it yourself, you know, it's hitting people hard. So typically we have someone who might go out to get it one afternoon and then need the next day for recovery. We should be passing through this. Um, we are, uh, 85 to 90% vaccinated. Either completely in process, meaning I've had my first, I'm just waiting on my second. And I, I think the teacher, uh, confidence level is very high now that they have had, um, access to the vaccine. So we're hoping that in this last quarter, with such a high percentage of our staff already receiving the vaccine, that attendance should level off and hopefully normalize once we're back to our typical in-person, uh, routine program. I, I think that's been one of our, uh, real highlights throughout the whole year. Um, from the beginning, we've been able to provide our program, um, maybe not as we wanted to in person, but either through remote hybrid or now with our transition in person. Kids have been getting full instructional days, um, in each mode of delivery. And we really, you know, anecdotally in talking with teachers, some people feel like they're ahead of where they may be in a given year, given the efficiency of some of the technical tools. Others feel like it's taking them kind of a two to one ratio on the pacing. But I think there's high level of confidence that, um, the curriculum is being delivered in a quality way. And, um, anxious now that we have kids back at school to be able to observe them directly. So I would say the, the low light really of this report is the budget is a continued struggle for us. This will tie to a conversation a little later on. We are expecting more Esser dollars, but our only confirmed dollars to date, um, will be a $654,000 reimbursement. So I have the budget flagged in yellow. Um, it probably could be red, but I think we've anticipated this all along. We are very close. Um, back in August, we were estimating 1.5 million for this year and we're at 1.6. The, nothing has changed since our last discussion, except what we're discovering now is that the food service operation has generated no revenue this year. Um, so it will be a direct cost to us. We're ballparking $125,000. These are not Abby's certified numbers. He hasn't gone through everything with the tech. He hasn't gone through everything with the tail and given it the final stamp of approval. But we assume it's going to be in this area. Hopefully, this is the low watermark, the high watermark and not the low watermark. If that does come to pass, and that's the bill that we have to pay for food service this year, we're going to be looking at the total cost of 1.6 million, our known reimbursements in federal aid and state aid of 654,000, which leaves us with a $960,000 bill that's going to get put to reserves. So when we have our conversation later, we're going to revisit this chart and its impact on our multi-year approach to budgeting. Because that is a significant, this is nearly 25% of our reserve fund.
I have a question.
Yep.
Can we go back to the, the kitchen costs?
Yep.
I had thought that we were doing lunch for everybody because of COVID and that we would be reimbursed for that. I mean, and I, is that, is everyone else thinking that that's kind of where we were coming in on this? And I, I'm wondering why.
You're accurate.
Yes, so when we, with COVID, there is an opportunity, which we have taken advantage of, to provide free and reduced lunch to all school enrolled students, as well as community members through the, the sites where people can do pickup. We have definitely followed through with that. But the issue is that as school has gone on and we've tried to balance what we can logistically handle with safe distancing and also the number of students passing through. We've really, we've been making lunch more of an opt-in program. So rather than just handing out, you know, meals to everyone, which you could do, we're really making sure that people who are looking for the meals are getting them. And so that's something we really need to be able to do in order to legitimately have the right number of lunches per day, to have the right amount of spacing between the students, and also to have it move pretty quickly because of the time constraints during the day, given that we have more lunches, more, you know, fewer students. So as a result, there is some, a good bit of overhead cost that comes with a normal year. But more so because, you know, we basically have to staff a little higher related to the extra lunches and, and what we are preparing. So, so there's going to be, there's going to be some net amount that we can't cover because we're not just handing out meals to everyone at this point. We're just making sure they're available to those on an opt-in basis. So the other thing I would just say is, this is kind of a projection. It's kind of early typically. And some of the opt-in issues kind of changed in the late fall as we started to figure out how in-person and hybrid learning was going to work. Before, earlier in the year when it was completely remote, there was a lot more volume happening before we were having the distancing issues kind of manage what we could, what we could do. So typically ChartWells is very, very good, I think, at starting to see the patterns. And there've been a couple of changes in the patterns, again, hybrid and now again, as we go to full in-person. And typically what they will do is manage the costs primarily, you know, labor and staffing to make sure that we're as lean as we can be through the end of the year. And so I'm hopeful that this number will be well conservative. Remember also that we typically do have some overage in the food service account every year, just because of the way we're structured, even in a non-COVID year.
So Avi, that buck 25 is basically all staffing? Am I understanding that?
No, no, it's not all staffing. I mean, there's, well, I mean, I guess you could say that for every, you know, for the food cost that gets covered through the reimbursement program. So I guess in that sense, that's probably true to some extent. I guess it probably would end up being staffing and benefits primarily, as well as non, non-food supplies. And we also have a standard cost for, you know, the cost of the contract with ChartWells. They're continuing to do all the management of the program, all the Department of Ed requirements, and which have been changing quite a bit. And they've really done an amazing job to keep us going. And they've been very flexible. They said, you know, they, they've really taken the lead on how the principals need the logistics to work on the ground. And they've made sure that we just have the meals to make sure people can be fed. So they've been very flexible. So I think we've, it's been another year where that contract has really proven its worth. It is a fixed fee, by the way, just to clarify that last one.
Okay. The increase in personnel costs is just, is just that. We had more personnel than we had budgeted in December. Is that correct?
And we were really taking some estimates at that time. Basically, we thought we might need for, you know, potential absences and coverage and that sort of thing. And it's just, it's been continually evolving as we see and people's plans changed. And so, yeah, that's a kind of, you know, work in progress as we go. And I think Pam came up with the first estimate that she and I worked together to kind of do our best estimate based on some projections of how many people might be out. And the second column, which we previewed at the last meeting, is more of a true up based on what we're seeing so far. We still have quite a few months and quite a few, you know, days of the year to go. So it's, and a lot of this, you know, sometimes can be hourly costs for hourly staff, for example. So I think it still remains to be seen where it'll come in at the end of the year. But this is certainly a line-by-line type of estimate.
The primary difference between 12-1 and 4-2 is the implementation of hybrid at the secondary. That's the, that's the add from 327 to 436.
And what's, and what's not here is the, what we might get from the Recovery Act that was just passed.
Correct. So if that's another 400,000, that will help bring that down.
Yeah.
I think what we're finding in some of the language, just to be transparent, is that the, the grants are written sometimes for future expenses, not past expenses. So we know that the grant is going to be for '22 through '24. So it may be for expenses as of a certain date.
But not current expenses?
Or like, for example, if we pre-bought all of our PPE, you can't apply it to that. If, you know, we can apply it maybe to the June month of staffing, but not the January month of staffing if it hasn't been a grant that has been effective. A grant that was not available at that point in time.
So can I?
Yep. Yep.
Two things. The other, I want to ask one question. Is the ESSAR money structured like FEMA where you apply and get it? Or is it just granted to you? And then second, I think that we had talked to the towns about CARES money and they, Avi, can you just, I forget what they had said.
Can I ask that we just power through the updates, the goals, and then do this as the budget conversation?
Oh, sure.
Just because I think we're, it may make sense to talk about it closer to what the decision point is going to be on the budget.
Okay.
All right. So overall, our state of COVID, and I guess we call them in-person indicators now, are, they're good. We're in really good shape. One thing I wanted to note was that, you know, the elementary, 99% of the students are attending full in-person. So we only have a couple of classrooms that have remote students in them. So that issue has somewhat worked itself through. After two weeks, I think fine-tuning, the logistics is the primary work the principals are doing, just working on bottlenecks and movement of kids around the building. But I think, you know, reports are a lot of happy faces, smiling eyes behind the mask. It's nice to have the kids back and to have this rhythm of regular school, five days a week back in play. So excitement at the elementary school and middle school and high school are gearing up and they are ready to go for next Monday. At the middle school, 91% of the students are projected to return to full in-person. Furniture was key to making it happen on the 12th, and that's arrived. It's already in play. We're ready to go. High school is doing, it's, well, I think last time we discussed this, we were looking at maybe 54% of the kids were, were going to be doing in-person. We're up to 74% of the students in grades nine to 11 are returning, beginning next week. And the seniors typically, they, on fourth term, they're going out, as Lucas said, on their internship. So 61 students are going to be fully remote. The remainder will have some work still left to do on campus and will be in and out as they would in a typical year. We have 88 students in grades nine to 11 that are going to remain remote. Everyone's getting really excited for the senior class in-person day on Friday. I think it's going to be celebratory in nature. I know Trish was excited to be able to offer this. The timing of the return obviously is, is not great for the seniors to have an in-person experience. But they wanted to continue with their internship. So it will be as normal as normal can be under these circumstances. They're even going to hold the Powder Puff football game on the 15th. So we're trying to get back some of our traditions. And Tricia and Craig are looking at the newest guidance that came out on end-of-year activities and will be with us on May 4th to go over the game plan for the senior prom, the senior party, graduation. They need to reconcile, how can we provide the best experience for kids as close to normal and still remain within the guidelines? And I think they're puzzling through that, working with their colleagues in other towns to try to see just what can, what they can accomplish. I know they'll do their very best to make it as authentic as possible for the kids. So we're excited about that. It, it's really, really nice to have life back on the campus and just to see some, you know, traditional old activities taking place. A few notes, looking ahead to '21, '22. We intend to begin the year with in-person structures. We're assuming at this point, without further information, that it will be similar instruction, instructor to where we are right now. If things change, we will have to make adjustments. They could change from the positive. They could also get stricter going forward. I know there's a lot of speculation about whether or not we're going to see another surge. I think we feel very confident that we have a game plan to cover the continuum. Just, you know, if we need to slide to hybrid, if we need to slide to remote, we have the structures in place to do it. We have a little know-how behind us now. So we're well-prepared for whatever next year brings. But I think we're remaining optimistic that we will start to get on the other side of this in the fall of next year. Important to note, because there is a lot of choice in the year, that beginning next fall, there will be no remote-only option for students and families. The expectation is all students will enroll in the formal in-person program. And like on a snow day, if we have to go to hybrid for a couple of days or remote for a period, the whole district, the whole school will move to that. But we will not be able to accommodate individual students in a high-flex model. We will work with the state on any options that are available for families that may want to make that choice. But it will be a program that we will recognize the credits for, but will not be delivered by our teachers. We're going to get our teachers back to doing the one thing at a time, knowing that there may be periods where the one thing is hybrid or remote only. But it will be moving as a unit. So just kind of letting people know that early. And then we, we have some initial dates for next year, so the preliminary calendar. Probably most important to note tonight is first day of school is scheduled for 9:01. And then our, probably a good discussion point, we can table it for tonight, if you like, if you feel like we have too much on the agenda. Holiday break is, is tight next year. The 24th is a Friday, and then we'd be returning on Monday, the 3rd. I would recommend 12:23 is a half-day because people tend to start to travel earlier in the week. But I don't know if we want to consider, maybe we just need to wait and learn more about what next year might look like. If there's any value in building in some mitigation or extensions on either side for potential ramifications of travel. I think what we've done this year at the end of April break is build in a day for surveying families and getting a sense of who may have been to hotspots. I don't know if that'll still be an issue next year or if that'll all be just part of our past. So I'm just putting it on the radar screen. I think we can discuss it when we bring you the full calendar in May, but just something to think about. And we've already got graduation penciled in for 6:03 of '22.
Pam, may I ask you a question based on this slide specifically?
Yep.
I heard some, you know, yakking on the news the other day, specific to Massachusetts, about a possible, I don't know what the word I want to use is, guideline, not mandate, but whatever. Some discussion of summer school, that the DESE was telling districts to figure out a summer plan. That doesn't apply to us because we've met all the time on learning benchmarks, right? What's the story on that?
You never, I never know if there will be a mandate. There could be. I would think that it would be targeted at high-need students or some type of metric in which you can demonstrate learning loss. So yes, to your question, I think our ability to keep the program fairly tight this year. We don't have the volume to do a large summer school. We, if there is a mandate, I would think we would look to partner with another town. We are looking at potentially, if there is grant money available, expanding the Y program in the summer to move, to include math in addition to literacy. And I think Allison is working with her team. We'll have our traditional special education summer extension program, but also to see if there's an opportunity to put together some, some psychological services for those in need over the summer. So yes and no. I don't think we're going to get mandated to. If we are, we'll partner with a larger school that has greater capacity. But we're going to run our typical summer programs and look for expansion opportunities for kids who may be in significant need. So just a few updates. We've been doing the strategic planning vision of the graduate work. The survey is planned to roll out on Thursday and run through the Monday after vacation. We've got the team working on that. We have, April 28th, we're going to be doing the data review. So looking at what we learned in the survey, crafting some questions for the focus groups on May 5th. Anything you can do to drive people to sign up for those. The broader scope of opinion that we get, the better served we'll be in our planning. The piece that I, that ties back to Teresa's comment in our discussion about the, the transition period for school committee is, we're scheduled for the 24th and/or the 25th for our large group convening. So that's bringing together the, the team that's working on listening and gathering input about, you know, where we're at and where we should be. And then coming together with the school committee, the admin team, to kind of work it into a set, a framework and a set of priority goals for next year so we can begin our district improvement planning. This is going to land right in the middle of the transition. So it'll be up to the chair to kind of lead the discussion on this and make a determination. I would ask, if you're willing, it might be nice to have the outgoing members and incoming members working together at those meetings. So we have a little bit of a past perspective and a new set of eyes as well. I don't even know what the availability will be of the new, of the new folks. So just a thought on that.
I think if the people who are planning to run are watching this, maybe they could just mark their calendars for those dates. That would be awesome. So on the outgoing people, did you want Annie and me to be part of this as well?
I think it's for the committee to consider whether there's value in having both the outgoing and the incoming people at this session.
I think that Shannon and Annie would definitely add value to this session.
I agree.
And I hope that they will join us.
Well, just working with the steering committee, I found that, I'm in one of those situations where, and I know this is, I do this anyway. I know the ins and outs of how the district plan and the school plan, I know how it all meshes together. And sometimes that can be a conconity to people who are trying to listen and sort things out. So having a couple of people who can kind of help and bring the new folks along and understand how, what some of the history is, how we, why we have what we have, why we're looking to do this. Questions will come up. It just may help with some of the history pieces and some of the perspective-taking.
Okay, so you're looking at May 24, May 25 for this meeting?
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay.
Thank you. And then my And then my last, just general update, tentative last day of school for this year. If anybody's wondering, June 16th, we had one official snow day. And this is your school committee schedule for the remainder of the year. One thing, again, doesn't need to be settled tonight. We have June 2nd is our regular business meeting. Then we could either go with the June 15th meeting, or we could schedule it ahead of the Manchester Town meeting on 621. Like typically, our April and our May meetings are ahead of the town meetings. We could combine these two, or we could just keep them separate and go to town meeting and just do our piece and go. So that's up for the committee to decide that this is what the schedule is through the end of the year. On the 4th, we'll have our outlook for next year. Any other questions on kind of current issues and where we are? Goals, this is going to be a little redundant, so I'm just going to summarize and then ask questions if we want to take it up at a future meeting, we can. I would say, when we talked about goals at the beginning of the year, I was hesitant to put COVID on there because I really did not want it to be the only thing that we did this year. But in, he's laughing, in summary, this is really driven everything. You know, every time we start, go to start a new project, we're mounting another transition. So we've had three or four reopenings of school this year or back-to-school periods. And for those who worked on subcommittees or the negotiation committee, I think each transition has come with a set of anxieties and worries and concerns that are very real and very legitimate and needed a lot of time and energy to make sure we were answering questions and being prepared for things. So without a doubt, just the day-to-day management of COVID, everything from MOU language to what the day will look like, to making sure people were supplied to, you know, the 40 HR cases that we had to process through. This has really been extremely time-consuming, more so than I ever imagined. But I think, you know, it's been as successful as it could be this year, knowing full well that at any stage of the game, there were people who wanted something different than we were able to offer. I think, looking back, being able to have offered, you know, a solid time and learning and a synchronous experience for our students where instruction was being guided by the teacher was really our big, our big win in this. So I feel like we've been able to manage it well, as well as could be expected. And, you know, you can read through the details, I don't need to read to you. I think the other surprise, and I didn't think it was going to take a lot of time this year, was the budget. I expected that to be very routine and not really consume a lot of time, but it did. We, you know, we have some new members on boards, there are a lot of questions, and there was a lot of education to be done. And I think we also found ourselves in the middle of this crisis, also beginning to look at a crossroads in our budget long-term. So the unexpected piece that came out of this year was concentrated time and effort on the budget, long-term budget planning, running multi-year models and working with our town partners. I do think, you know, you ran through a lot of the points earlier, I think we've had a few aha moments. Things that we've been working on through the years, but really put some some labels on now, which is the interaction between our our growth rate, which is stable and reliable year in and year out. We're always falling between 3.2 and 3.5. And when we're not, we're taking steps to make sure we can get it down to that. What's less reliable is that apportionment formula. So when our numbers run through apportionment, it is very bouncy on the town side, so they have less predictability. And it's almost out of, it's out of our control, right? It's not whether it's 3.2 or 3.5, it's really where is total enrollment at, where's the town population at, what does EQV look like? And what is, what is the movement in those numbers from year to year? So we could talk all night about this, but again, the surprise project of the year was the budget. The one that I wanted to work on the most was the strategic planning and really just starting to line up and make sure where our vision sits right now, where our core values are, and what this concept or the vision of the graduate is. Is all in alignment and in a position to help us move forward in the future and start some fresh goal-setting through the district and school plans. And that just kept getting pushed off, but we are determined that we are going to have that framework completed by the end of the year so we can be able to bring some goal frameworks forward in the fall. So that's our work that we'll be doing in May. So I think that's it in a nutshell. There are some other pieces in here, I've taken up a lot of airtime. Were there questions on these, specific things that you wanted me to address or things that you thought would be in here that weren't?
No, I I read them and I thought they looked good. And I thought you really addressed and captured what this year looked like. Hopefully, we'll never have another year quite like this one. I think at some point at the end of one of these meetings at the end of the year, we need to just take some time where we talk about all the all the silver linings and the things that people have learned. Because I do think, even though it's been really hard, and I know people were really disappointed about not having the kids more in school at the beginning of the year. I think we've learned so much, the kids and the teachers. So I just think, at some point, we should, we should talk about all that, too. But I thought the goals looked good.
I thought they looked great, and when I read them, Pam, I thought, oh, my God. Like, when you pull this on paper and you look back at it, it's overwhelming. It's overwhelming. And if you had looked at this in September and said, this is what I'm going to be doing, I I think, you know, excuse the vernacular, but your head would have exploded. And I looked, I looked at this thinking, my God, when did she sleep? So thank you for putting this all on paper. I think it, it really highlights how difficult and how, I'm not even going to use the word, how, the word everyone's been I just used it, this this year was. And to throw the budget piece into it, too, that we thought was going to be pretty straightforward, that was an added happy surprise, was it not? Sorry, so thank you.
Couple things.
Yep.
Go ahead, you finish.
I just want to say, I'm giving you the 50,000-foot view. This is all made to happen through the work of the teachers and the principals and everyone working together as a team to move the ball forward. I'm doing my best to help support, coach, and steer the ship a little bit. But everyone has gone above and beyond to try to get this done. So, you know, this is, this is a team effort, for sure. Annie, your question, I'm sorry.
No, a couple, just a couple of remarks. At the beginning of the year, I think, or at the end of last year, we gave you a charge of ensuring educational rigor and trying to deliver the program as it was designed. And so that was really your charge. And I think that while many people were unhappy sometimes with the delivery mechanism, we delivered, I think you delivered on that charge. And the time on learning is a good testament to that. I think that some data points would be great in this, especially going into the summer when we do evaluations. But I think there's a lot of successes that we can sing about and some things that we've learned. But I want to thank you for the fact that you kept that that front and center, and that's because we asked you to do that. So that's one thing. I think the other thing that's very evident here is this budget versus program. And, you know, we have talked for years about trying to maintain program and deliver on the promise of two and a half or staying within the levy limit. And what became very evident this year in the discussions with the towns was that we are driven by budget. We are not driven by program. And I'm hoping that in the discussions about the future and what our school district will look like, and I I don't think that I've delivered on that promise. I know that Caroline is on the line, and she was a big champion of that, of somebody who was saying, we need to fight for the program. And so I guess, you know, this is the reconciliation that needs to happen, which is, what do you want, Manchester and Essex? Do you want to have a district that that aligns with your budget goals? Or do you want to have an excellent educational program? And what does that look like? And what is the investment that we need to make in that to have it keep going? So that's, that's something that I saw in your goals. And I just also wanted to ask you two things. Do you want Shannon and I to, or Sarah, do you want Shannon and I to do some superintendent evaluation before we leave? Because you're going to have to do that document this year. And second, I would really like to help participate in the strategic plan in any way that I can. So those are two things I just wanted to say.
So to the first question, it would be great if we could try to reset the clock on the cycle for evaluation, which is supposed to be done in May before the turnover of the school committee. I don't know if it's possible. We've always, because there's been such continuity and there's always things to do, we've always just mutually agreed to move things around. But it may be a good time with such, so many new people to kind of reset the clock, if that's possible.
Pam, we are going to get it done in May before the turnover. And I hope all the school committee members are on board to start thinking about your evaluation forms right now because we're doing it before May 10th and May 18th.
Send them to us now.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we can get those.
I don't even know what this looks like.
That's okay.
Don't worry, Teresa.
I'll show you how to do it right, okay?
I'll pull it together and try to get it to you by Friday.
Awesome.
Well, I was going to say, we'll be missing the Annie filibuster with doing it the right way.
I write very good evaluations.
You do. Just your comments that go on, just kidding.
That way, we can set goals on it in a new two-year cycle with with the group that can follow them through. So thank you, that would be helpful.
Thank you.
All right, I think, I saw, I saw, you're done with this segment, we can go to Cheryl in the CPAC update?
Awesome. Cheryl, you're up.
Hello.
Hi.
So this is, I believe, I think, our first official update, and it's a quick one today. On March 18th, we had our special education parents' right workshop with Amy Rogers. That's an annual workshop that the district needs to hold. On April 16th, which is Thursday at 6:00 PM, we are going to be having a meeting and we are going to be presenting our bylaws and hopefully have those approved by the group and get us to a more official status. I'd also like to report that we did a survey of all the special ed parents in the district, CPAC survey, on how things were going, concerns about return to program. Happy to report that we had 106 people respond, special ed parents, which is, makes up 50% of the special ed parents in general. So that's a huge response for us. And we're going to be going over that data that we collected with the group on Thursday. And then we'll present that to you guys at the, at our next meeting.
Thanks, Cheryl.
Yeah, that's about it. And and just to remember that CPAC meetings are the third Thursday of every month. And we welcome all our special ed parents. And that's all, guys.
Cheryl, that's awesome, thank you. Do you guys have, does anybody have questions for Cheryl? Well, thank you for keeping the CPAC going throughout COVID this year. I know it's been really important for all of our special ed families to have that support, so I really appreciate it.
And we have a great group of parents that have been attending on a regular basis. And I'm really excited about where the group is going to go from here.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks, guys. Bye.
Bye, thanks. All right. Pam, do you want to talk about the MOA?
Sure, the MOA memorializes the work that we have done from December through, what was it, about March 25th? Along the lines of the half-day schedule, working conditions for teachers when they came back into the building. I would say that there won't be many new changes, all of the changes have already taken place. And we came up with many agreements as we went along, and we're finally just committing it to paper. So I think when you read through it, you probably didn't see a lot new or a lot to ponder. It passed, MEDA, which is the Teachers Association, ratified it two Thursdays ago. So right now, it's up to the committee for consideration and whether or not you'll support the language that's in there.
So do you need us to take a vote on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Official vote.
We all had, we all received it ahead of the meeting, so we don't need to, like, read through it now. It'll be posted after.
Yep, we'll post it on the site, and if there are questions, if specific questions, I'm happy to answer them.
And we did review this last meeting, so it's not like we haven't looked at it.
Right.
So Sarah, I can, I'd like to make a motion that we approve it and just even open it for discussion.
Okay, so can you get a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second it, Shannon.
Okay, any discussion?
So I just want to add on what Pam has said. It really, at this point, it somewhat feels a bit like a historical document because it memorializes a lot of the discussions and the conditions that we went through. But I think it's a, it's a worthwhile updated document to cover us for the rest of, for the rest of the year. And I think the process was a, was a good process to stay connected with the teachers all the way through.
Yeah, I also, having been on that team, I want to give a shout out to our union leadership because we met really a lot. We spent a lot of hours talking through all of these issues. And I've heard through the grapevine that some people, you know, thought, oh, we're not going back to school because of the union. And there's, there's a little union negative talk going on. And I just want people to know that it's, it wasn't our union. We had staffing issues because we had people who were taking federally mandated leaves. But we did not have a problem with our union. We have been in collaborative negotiations throughout the year, and they've been great, and our teachers are amazing. So it was not always easy to have these meetings, but I'm really glad that we did it, so I think it's all good. Any other discussion? All right, Annie?
Yes.
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so the MOA passes unanimously, school committee. All right, Pam, school choice.
Okay, here we go. Give me one second to load the slide.
No. If you build it, they will come.
It always goes so slow when I'm waiting, I need it to appear. This is pretty straightforward. So if you recall, earlier in March, I gave you the preliminary report on school choice and reminded you that in order to keep our revenue stream steady at 350,000, we were going to need to enroll 17 students. Looking at enrollment, my recommendation is going to be that we attempt to bring in 12 to 14 students at the elementary, approximately seven per school, and three to five students at grade six, the middle school. It's a pretty small class next year, 80 students. The timeline would be to confirm the elementary grade levels by May 3rd. This means the principals are going to make at least tentative assignments, not necessarily of teacher or personnel, but number of teachers per grade level based on enrollment. And that will guide us on whether or not the likely plan of placing students at K and 1 in grade three will still hold. I will come back to you and confirm this game plan on the meeting on the 4th with the intent on, of holding a lottery May 5th and having notifications out by May 7th, so that we'll have it all ready to roll for next year.
Will we see the impact, you know, grade level by grade level on the 4th?
Yes.
Thank you.
Because it's going to depend on where they place certain number of teachers at each grade. Because it's going to depend on where they place certain number of teachers at each grade, where the biggest margin will be. So just again, not to go too deep into this, but for those who are new to school choice, the principle of school choice is we are selling is, is not a word I love, but essentially we are offering unused seats to other communities and we are receiving $5,000 in chapter 70 per student for those seats. So for it to be, for, for it to generate revenue for us, we have to have classes that are undersubscribed, so under benchmark. If our benchmark is 22 students in grade three, we would look to target a class that has 18 students or 17 students by placing a few school choice students in there, leaving enough room in case resident enrollment goes up. I think we talked earlier this year, it's always a balancing act between putting school choice students in, in empty seats and trying to be predictive about what resident enrollment might do in the coming years. Because once you give the seat away, the student is a Manchester Essex student for life. They're one of us, we are happy to have them. But if our resident enrollment spikes, then we're going to need to add teachers at that point to accommodate. So, you know, Avi has some nice models, we try to monitor it. We do have a couple of grade levels depending on where the teacher, where the teachers are assigned. That will allow us to, to accommodate these numbers. And to Annie's point, we'll confirm those for you with our chart on May 4th. Yep, Teresa?
I'm new to this. So when you, when you do this, do you, like when we see the numbers on May 4th, will we see the breakdown of class size per school? Do you try to keep the class sizes equitable between the two elementary schools or do you?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And when we, when we offer the school choice seat, we do not confirm their school until August.
Okay.
When all of the enrollment, summer enrollment comes in. That way there, we reserve the right to put kids in the school where it's most advantageous to manage the class size.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, that's it on school choice, unless there are more questions. Avi, the budget amendment?
Yep, hi everyone. So I had sent some materials along to school committee. This is something we've talked about before, so I can keep this requested amendment very short, unless there are questions, in which case I'm happy to go into it further. But essentially what we're doing now that we have the go-ahead from the Department of, we're hoping to approve our fiscal year 20 access and deficiency funds is to amend the budget to allow us to transfer the amount that we had wanted to transfer into stabilization related to the construction interest that we had earned at Memorial School. So in fiscal year 20. So that amount is $481,694. And so this would be a vote to amend the fiscal 21 budget by $481,694 upward with equal offsetting amounts on the revenue side being transferred from access and deficiency and on the quote unquote expenditure side being transferred into stabilization. Technically, we're not actually spending that money, we're just putting it into stabilization, which is our reserve fund set aside for facilities and capital-related items that would bring the total of that account to $970,803. And this is kind of very much according to plan. We just needed to wait for the Department of Revenue to give us the go-ahead, which they've done. Now that that's happens, if the school committee adopts it, it would go to both towns who, you know, if they do nothing, which is what they did last year, based on the fact that it's kind of a decreed upon process, it would become adopted after 45 days. They have the right to just let it go without a vote because there's no change to their town assessments. So the next step of this approval would be to just forward this, this resolution to the towns, which I would do immediately after this meeting. Any questions?
Okay, so we need a motion to move $481,694 to the stabilization fund?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks Shannon, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Great, Annie?
Yes.
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So the FY '22 budget is the last item on the list. So we're kind of go full circle back to that COVID spreadsheet, which we can, we'll take a look at again. So last week, we, or last meeting, rather, we shared that our healthcare renewal came in lower than our original assumption. And the result was approximately $215,000 in spending reduction. We've also been watching our special education numbers. This is our mandated spending area. And in discussions with Allison, we're projecting that that area may be 125,000 over our original budget estimate. The source of this is just increasing number of high-need students that require one-on-one support in those programs like pre-K, not the expanded pre-K, but the mandated special education component, swing and sale. So typically a one-to-one is a determination through the development of an IEP. So it's not just general staffing ads. It's one, once it's codified in that document, it becomes a required spending option. And we're also looking at potential out-of-district increases for next year. So this is a number you know, we, Avi and Allison as a team, watch this number like a hawk. They have great, a great sense of what's, who is in the pipeline and what the needs of individuals are. I think move-ins continue to be wild cards for us. We welcome all students and we have an obligation to them when they come. So it's not, we are happy to help these families. But like you said, Annie, if we're, if we're looking to manage the budget, it's an area of the budget that we have very little visibility on and don't have a lot of extra dollars to support when it happens. So again, we'll keep our eye on this from now until the end of the year. This is a conservative estimate, I would think. I don't know, Avi, if you want to comment on that at all. So I think as we, we look at the conversation we were having last week about how do we best utilize the extra dollars we may have in the budget, I think we just need to be mindful that this is just one area of mandated spending that we're not sure we have completely nailed down yet. And I think it's a cautionary tale in terms of not really being sure what next year, a full-blown typical year may look like for us in terms of increased needs of students. That being said, again, attention to, and this is my lead into the, the big question of the night, we're going to be utilizing potentially as high as $960,000 in reserves to manage our one-time COVID costs this year. If the ESAR dollars come in and are usable against these costs, this could come down about $400,000, so it may be almost 50% of that. But there is a significant impact on our projected reserve usage in the three-year outlook. If we don't get any relief off of the $960,000, our spending to manage our operational budget, meet our COVID costs and make good on our capital planning promises is going to result in a depletion of our overall reserve pool to about $664,000 in FY '23. And so my red flag, my concern, my question about managing the program first is as of FY '23, if we don't delay the projects or find other sources of revenue and can't hold steady the utilization of excess and deficiency funds to act as a revenue source in our budget, we will only have two more years if that of revenue to spend to manage the budget. And that's to say we don't have any extraordinary expenses along the way, like move-ins, out-of-district placements, facilities issues with Essex or the, or the middle high school. This doesn't leave us prepared, well-prepared for an emergency. And it also places a depleted reserve fund right on the eve of a potential gear-up-for-building project in Essex, which we all know at this point, maybe people who are listening don't, the reserve fund is how they measure our, our credit risk. And the better our reserves, the better our interest rates will be on the loan. So I, I lead in with all of these things, just to say there's a lot of variables to consider on how we structure our budget this year and what our final ask is to the towns in terms of the assessment number and its impact on apportionment.
Could you go back to that reserve slide for just a minute so I can wrap my head around that?
So Shannon?
Okay, go ahead, Annie.
Well, I'm, I'm kind of, I think Shannon and I are looking at the same thing, which is that 960 and the potential of 400K to offset some of that. In that, if you could Pam, be more specific about that 400K, because I know that we have potential of the American Rescue Act, and I think that is called. And then we don't have an, so any clarity at this point from the two towns if they are going to give us any of their CARES dollars. So that's CARES dollars from last year. And then they will also be getting the ESSAR funds. Again, you had said earlier that that may be fiscal year-specific or it could be used over multiple years, but only for specific things. We don't really know the details of that. But so can we go back to the slide that Shannon and I was just talking about?
So even if we get 400 grand off the 960, I mean, we're still talking about reserves going from 4.3 down to 646 in two years. I mean, 400 grand's, you know, not going to move the needle a ton.
Well, okay, but can we?
The 335 likely won't be the number. This number will likely grow for FY '23.
The three, which number are you looking at? Hold on, I'm sorry.
The 335.
Oh, you can't see my pointer. In the S, S, excess and deficiency column, the 335 is the number we're using as revenue into operating. If we're at 335 this year, we won't be at 335 next year. That's going to have to go up.
Yeah.
Right.
Plus, we're using OPEB dollars.
Yep.
And we've taken a bit out of stabilization to fund some facilities projects, and that's not accounted for here. So all in, we are at 500,000 plus in total reserve use in our budget.
But your 125 is committed in technology?
That's for parity with the technology upgrades at Memorial School.
Okay.
Promethean boards.
Right.
Active boards, active boards.
Yep. So, I mean, there's some strategies on the gym and the field replacement. I mean, they're out there.
Field replacement, we, we can get into that later in the spring, but my understanding from both Jason and from Jordan is that we are facing increasing physical risk to students and referees are having concerns with usage of the field.
Well, we were supposed to, this year, but we got a stay of execution on that because no one's using them, right?
Right.
But what I was saying is that you have, you have different strategies for funding those. I mean, I know we have stabilization, I know that. But we have talked at collaboration about, you know, do you want to do discreet asks at town meetings for those pieces? I mean, I'm just, you know, we're not going to be here anymore. I'm just sorry, there's another, there are other strategies if you want to retain, depending on when the towns want to go for the override. I mean, do you know what I'm saying? It's like pay now or pay later. I.
Well, we've also talked about corporate sponsorships too on those fields.
Really?
If you know someone at Coke, we'll do it. Call them up right now.
Yeah.
So Avi, the timeline on Highland Field, last discussion was both fields, summer of '22.
That one was worse than the other.
Highland is worse.
And that's not considered as bad now because no one was on it for a year? Or it's just, I didn't phrase it correctly, I'm sorry. It's just not as urgent this year because no one was on it. We almost get another year out of it.
Avi, go ahead.
Sorry, I keep hitting mute, I apologize. Uh, yeah, I mean, we are continuing to maintain it. We're very active in the maintenance plan, but at some point, there's only so much maintenance you can do. It's kind of reminds me of some of the conversations we had about the Memorial School, where you can patch the roof and patch the roof, but at some point, you know, you got to replace the roof. So I think the same is true. And I think given that we have kids on it, we don't really want to be going to the point where we're getting into risky territory. We have it tested to make sure it's safe. It's not that it's unsafe currently, it's that we're really just taking too long to replace it, in my opinion. And I'm sure Jason would agree. We, we are okay getting to next summer. You know, I think getting to summer after that would be definitely a stretch, so.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
The backup boiler is less of a discretionary issue, right?
Yep, that's, that is definitely less of a discretionary issue, I think. That's just, I mean, I think in general, we have been trying to take the approach over the past five years of figuring out what, when the prudent time to make these investments are. So where people aren't saying, what are you doing and why aren't you taking care of the assets in the building? And so, you know, and Jason's been amazing since he's got here to help do this work as well. But, you know, at some point, I'm not sure I would really understand the logic of why you would want to put off a heating system when we need it to keep the building warm so kids can learn. So, you know, it wouldn't be on the sheet if we didn't think it was important. And I think we've been talking about the heating infrastructure at Essex Elementary for a few years. It's been doing okay, but every year that goes by is a little worse. So this year was definitely more challenging than last year for sure. And so we don't have unlimited time there.
Avi, one last question. Any other interest revenue on borrowing that we can anticipate to fund stabilization in the next couple of years?
I don't expect, expect much. I mean, we have potentially four to five million dollars left to borrow. And the amount of money we got was when we borrowed 35 million. So just by order of magnitude, I would not expect something too significant, unfortunately.
Yeah.
I mean, thankfully, we've put the money aside. We haven't used it yet, with the exception of, you know, the playground replacement, which it's been a long time since we purchased a playground there. I think that makes a lot of sense, so.
The only other thing I was thinking about was the, the proposed infrastructure bill. And, you know, is, is something like that, that is, you know, kind of has a time constraint on it? Will it have any funding that we may want to avail ourselves of earlier? You know, like Essex Elementary, that we should be, you know what I'm saying? I'm just wondering, how poised should we be? I don't think the towns can afford the, another big project, but.
I think the good thing about having a capital list is that as you identify potential funding resources, you can really jump. And so just to give you an example, you know, we had on the list trying to extend the building management controls, the controls that tell you, you know, how much heat to use, where and when in the building. And we have been able to work with the Town of Essex on the green grant to get that done free of charge. Normally, that's a project that has a very positive return on investment because you save money over time, you make your money back over, you know, five to seven years. With the work we did, it was an instantaneous payback because we didn't have to pay anything thanks to the partnership with Essex. And we're going to do the same thing, it's looking like, to extend for the rest of that building. So that's the kind of thing where as soon as we see grant funding, we're there. we're there. And if there are other things that we can do, great. Um, but generally, you know, a boiler and a turf field, those are, those are kind of, uh, they're capital, but they're recurring needs that really, uh, are not typically funded by grants.
Yeah. Thanks.
It could be some strategy discussion depending on where Essex wants to lead us in the timeline for Essex Elementary. I'm working on a timeline of application for SOI twenty-four, twenty-five as soon as MSBA releases us from the Memorial School. That SOI could yield a, um, a rapid repair outcome. If there's serious consideration of extending the timeline, which I've heard discussed. I wouldn't advocate for that. I would advocate for moving as quickly as possible because it may take several bites of, at the apple to get through.
Yeah.
To get back into MSBA. But if we are seeing mounting concerns by that point, sometimes they do put you down that route if it doesn't look like your project is going to, um, rise to uh, renovate or repair in the near future.
So, um, uh, the rapid ren- whatever, rapid repair is, is a pretty focused and discreet, um, thing. It's like a roof or a, a thing, right? It's not, it doesn't encompass, it doesn't encompass the entire facility, right? And it isn't driven by a, a feasibility report?
Correct. I think the strategy question and the concern is that if you opt for rapid repair or for calling it the right thing, then are you putting yourself at a disadvantage because you have a bigger envelope problem or a, a enrollment problem in your building, pushing it further down the line? So I think that is going to be the work of, with subcommittee going forward, and I think it needs some considerable thought as to how we want to approach it. I've kind of locked in on the traditional finish one, put in to start another, and let's keep going. Um, but I know that there are other considerations out there as well. And, and those are some of the big picture, long-term issues, and it does seem like we're gonna, they're all going to converge at or around the same time for an ask. The issue at hand tonight is really just to determine whether or not we're going to amend our budget as submitted to the towns. So the question we were pondering last session was whether or not we should take the reduced, um, healthcare renewal and apply it directly to the assessment, put some of it back into reserves, put all of it back into reserves, or do a combination of the two. So tonight, I would say we may want to consider not doing anything at all and leaving it in the budget in case we have unanticipated mandated expenses.
Are we now looking at that, um, uh, I'll call it savings from healthcare, the two hundred and fifteen thousand, are we looking at that basically being cut in half by the sped number?
Potentially. Avi, do you want to offer any of your insight on that?
Are we looking at a straight two hundred and fifteen in this chart, or is, that's what I'm wondering, given this?
Yeah, the one twenty-five that you saw Pam put up is, you know, roughly half of that amount. Um, you know, um, I think there's always some minor changes in staffing that can happen around special education, up or down. I wouldn't think that we would be bringing it up here unless, you know, we thought it was something that we definitely want to be prepared for next year. Um, because you tend to see changes throughout the year as different things happen with individual students. We've talked a lot about how we forecast on an individual student basis. So to me, I feel like, um, I, whereas I'm normally focused on how, how low can we keep our spending in a way that preserves program at this point, I think it's prudent for us to make sure that we're prepared for what are looking like increasingly realistic, uh, projections for increased costs in special ed. So I'm, I'm, I'm tending more conservative now, and that's after having spent, uh, one hours, you know, going line by line. I'll also come in with Pam to go through the numbers, so, um, I just think it's prudent, you know, typically, in a typical year when we get, uh, earlier town meetings than we are having this year and uh, healthcare numbers that might break a little bit later, you know, if, if there is savings, sometimes it helps us to offset some of the ups and downs. Um, now, some of those things came on the healthcare side known a little bit earlier, but we're starting to get into that time of year where we're getting a better picture of what the next fiscal year will be in terms of student needs. And, um, that's not something you can really, there's only so much you can do in December when you're putting your tentative budget together, um, to, you know, to project on a line-by-line basis. We do it, but you really need the passage of time to kind of have a better sense of what's happening. And again, it may be that come September, we're in a slightly different situation, up or down. I don't know. I would say it might be a little bit worse because I think, you know, we're seeing the trend up, but I don't know. Um, but either way, I think at this point, I, I, I'm feeling the need to be a little bit more cautious than I was maybe a month ago.
Okay, so this, this document still has the two fourteen in it, so we just keep things the way they are because you're anticipating some greater costs and sped and, you know, maybe some others. But this two fourteen might not really look like two fourteen, right? Is that what I'm hearing?
I'll come out and say I would recommend holding the budget exactly where it is.
Okay. Given this new information.
Given the new information and the unpredictability.
Okay.
Um.
And, and the knowledge that we're, we have dwindling resources to manage our own affairs.
Yep. Annie?
Um, so I thought we were trying to look at columns two A and two B, but yours, your Pam, you're, you and Avi are recommending the first column.
I'll be honest, I am most, I'm the one most strongly in the, uh, first column.
Avi, go ahead and make your, did you already make your argument and I wasn't paying attention?
I mean, I guess I would just say that my, my goal in this process is to understand everybody's needs, including our program, and to see what we can do to keep the number as low as possible. I feel like we have really tried to have consistent spending level and assessment level from year to year so that, you know, when we do get to the every seven to ten years where corrections necessary, we, we can show that we've been extremely lean and mean and doing our best. And I know sometimes that can feel like a loss for some of the things that we wish we could do over and above level services. And so that's where Pam and I work together. I mean, my job ultimately is to support the school and the students. Um, I, so I, while I'd like to see what other columns we can do, I think Pam's right. As we look at the new numbers, it's, it's looking, um, like that two hundred and fourteen thousand is not just free found money. It's going to need to help us to get through some unpredictability, and I think we just need to be careful. I think much bigger than anything that's on this page, if there's one thing I think I would say, it's three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of reserves as a revenue source in your budget is not a good plan. We've talked about it. We know that it's here for this year. Um, I was hoping that we might be a little further along around what the out years might look like in terms of changing. And I know it takes time and I know we're working on that. But right now, we don't really know how soon we're going to stop putting two hundred, three hundred and thirty-five thousand in. And I think as you saw the reserve slide, that's really what the real issue is, it, because the reserves are meant to fund things like boilers and, um, and turf fields and all those things. That they're one-time costs. It's not really meant to fund a, a revenue deficit, which is kind of where we're at. So, you know, just rewinding the tape, five to seven years, when we first started seeing this happen, we said, hey, this is happening. Let's look at the multi-year budget. Let's talk with our town partners. Let's get a plan together. And that's where we're at now. We just don't yet have that plan, but we know the costs are coming and we know COVID's eating away at the reserves. So, um, I think right now I'm not feeling as optimistic as I typically like to be when I get two hundred and fourteen thousand of good news on healthcare.
I hate it when you're not optimistic.
And Annie, to your point about program, I don't feel, we're using the reserves as revenue replacement because we're trying to keep the, the assessment numbers in a ballpark that the towns are comfortable with, which is noble. But the reality is none of these numbers are true.
Explain that remark.
We are suppressing the percentage increases by putting in our own revenue source through reserves, uh, through reserves. And quite frankly, we're not even using them to get the things that we want for our program.
It's exactly where we were in two thousand fifteen, sixteen.
It's exactly where we were.
And by the way, we're not even at level services.
Okay, but, okay, I feel like I keep, I keep returning to the form, which is I'm looking at two fourteen and then I'm looking at two A and two B and thinking, oh, you know what? We could reduce our ask of reserves and extend out our going to the two towns to possibly twenty twenty-four. And, um,
But Annie, looking at two fourteen.
Pardon?
You're not looking at two fourteen. We're not looking at two fourteen. That's two fourteen.
Remember too, Annie, the full reserve number is down here. If you go, uh, you can't see my pointer. If you go to, uh, revenue type, reserve type, E and D, OPEB stabilization. We're focusing on the three thirty-five, but you've, whoops, the three thirty-five that we're showing from E and D, but we've also embedded other sources of OPEB of stabilization.
Yeah.
Those have to come back in somehow because we can't indefinitely spend from them. So our real reserve use is four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. So that's our gap. We have a, a gap that has not been closed. It's just been stuffed with reserves.
But if you look at two B, you return OPEB at stabilization, you reduce your E and D. Right?
Yeah.
So your reserve usage is two forty-nine.
Um. But half of, you can't go to two forty-nine because now we have an anticipated cost of a hundred and twenty-five K.
Yeah.
So you, you only have a hundred to spend, or less, a little less than a hundred to spend to put back into reserves. And your reserve account is also your, um, internal circuit breaker account for unanticipated mandated spending.
Right, but we still don't know about CARES. I mean, we, we still have something, uh, you know, I'm just thinking about the unknowns that could potentially help us. And so I feel like if you did put that money back in OPEB and stabilization, then, then you're not falsely kind of robbing Peter, um.
And this is why I think we're trying to get the answer from the towns about how much of an override they can, they will feel comfortable with. So if our number's four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars in this year and we run out to twenty twenty-four, let's say that grows at three and a half percent. Not accounting for other existing gaps. What are we looking at? I think we said we were looking at easily a million dollars just in reserve replacement. So is Essex going to be comfortable with a four hundred thousand dollar reserve replacement override plus whatever new initiatives may be on the horizon on top of that? That's the question we really want answered in our process.
Yeah.
Not, not to get anybody to sign a commitment, but it's how you manage this is totally dependent on how much the taxpayer can bear going out. It's like we're running up a credit card a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Exactly.
I also, I also don't want to just pin it all on Essex. I mean, you know, when we're talking about overrides, it's going to have to be in both towns and.
This is true, but at this point, the ask is coming from Essex and our reduction or reserve use is three to one. So I think their need is sixty thousand dollars, which is forcing us into a hundred and fifty thousand dollar plus reduction.
Yeah.
To get there.
True, true.
So it's not anyone's fault. It's just the mechanism of the formula and the way our budget, um, breaks down and gets figured out. And that's why I think our big aha moment is, it's really not about the spending number. It's about how spending translates into assessment and how the minor shifts in those variables create numbers that look exorbitant for them. Even though the dollar figure is consistent with a three and a half percent assessment increase.
So when we're talking, uh, about using two A and two B, those, that, those assessments aren't really correct right there. Because we're not talking about two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars that we're putting back into these numbers, you know, to get, let's, let's look at option two B. Looking at total assessment of three five, Manchester three two five, Essex three nine five. So that's kind of exactly where they are.
Mm-hmm.
But you're not really going to get to those zero numbers on OPEB or stabilization because that two fourteen is not really two fourteen. So that's, that's where I'm sticking at. That's, that's, I'm having a problem getting past that because none of these numbers make sense because we're not talking about two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. We're talking about half that, more than half that.
You're talking about a hundred, really?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, it's, it's ninety if you account for the potential one twenty-five increase.
So do we need to decide tonight or can we wait until the next meeting? Because we already have the budget as it is right now. And, um, if we find we have some revenue that we want to, um, you know, apply towards reserves, um, well, you're asking us not to change anything anyway, right?
This was the next meeting, wasn't it? I mean, that's what we did last.
But, I know.
And, and they need to send something to the printers, right? Or are we?
Printers are gone, I think.
All right.
So what, can I ask a very basic question? What is it where we have to decide right now whether or not to change the budget such that it will affect the assessments, right? But can we hold off and just make our decision at the next meeting about two A, two B? I mean, can we make a decision about whether we want to put it back to reserves or keep it within our flexibility?
Fourth day with the first column.
Same time?
Yeah, I believe Brendan said the budget books are already printed, and he would be reading any amended number into the record that night. So yes, we could go right up until the fourth.
And then maybe we could, you know, I, I'm just going to throw this out there, but maybe in our, um, and since I wasn't there for the collaboration meeting, you guys might have discussed this. Um, but maybe it's a situation where we can say, hey, look, we're really working to get these assessments down. Um, but we need a little bit of visibility from you guys on what kind of CARES money you're going to give us. So we really can't do that work and sharpen those pencils until we have more data. I mean, is that something we can say?
So a big part of the conversation was, and we, I should have included this in my comments and I didn't. It's my understanding that the Esser dollars can be used as revenue replacement for the municipality. So that they could apply Esser dollars to making, uh, to paying their assessment this year.
So.
And they were going to look into that further and discuss it with their boards. They hadn't fully had those conversations yet. Because in reality, I think the conversation we're having is, it's less, it's less detrimental to us to write a fifty thousand dollar check or write a check in the amount that either of the towns needs to close their deficit than to triple that number in reductions to our budget.
Yeah.
So the, the ask, the ask is, can you use fifty thousand dollars of the one point one to one point five million dollars the towns will be receiving to, to, to make this assessment this year?
And they didn't. They were, there was still uncertainty on their part about their, the, the number that they had. Pam had numbers, but they were, theirs weren't kind of as solid, um, as we had hoped. So we did have those conversations and that's still, that's still out there. Um, one thing I would like to, to do tonight, and I know that you might be frustrated by this, but I would like, um, the other folks on the committee to ask questions about this because you and I are leaving, Shannon, and, um, I just think, you know, this is, you ask, you learn by asking questions. And I would love for people to ask questions, um, of what they're seeing so that they understand what we're doing here.
But it's so good to listen to you and Shannon ask all the questions for us and make it so clear, Annie.
I was going to ask, my question is, Annie, what do you think about this?
The good thing is we've had Teresa and Matt shadowing Annie and Shannon on the finance committee, and I got to go to the last collaboration committee. So I, I feel like, uh, we've had, I think we've all had a lot of budget, um.
And, yeah, I was, and I was just want to thank Pam and Avi. We actually spent about an hour, um, on a separate meeting on, on this sheet, um, alone. So I, they caught me up to speed on this one as well.
Okay. So, uh, please do not, um, feel that the school committee lack of questions is because we're not thinking about it or paying attention. We just are really enjoying the, the.
I didn't, I didn't, I did not imply, I don't, didn't mean to imply that. I just want to know where you're coming down and what you're thinking about because, um, I, as usual, don't know where I want to go with this.
Well, Teresa has her hand up and then I have something to say.
Yeah, so I, my. Yeah, so my question coming at this is someone help me understand why if we have this potential savings of roughly 90,000 that we're dealing with, given the offset, why would we do anything other than just keep it in the budget right now? I mean, I understand that this is not a huge amount when we look at the other chart of where our reserves are going and where we don't know what's coming next year. Why would we do anything other than leave that tiny bit of flexibility? That to me just doesn't seem like a big enough chunk. Again, I'm new and I accept this. So I'm just trying to understand why wouldn't we leave that little bit of flexibility in there, not knowing what's coming?
Teresa, you do understand this just fine.
Yeah, okay, so I, yeah, that's a good point. And I would say, I think, given, well, given that Pam and Avi both recommended that we make no changes right now. Given that there are a lot of unknowns in terms of our expenses and potential grants. And the towns also have unknown final CARES Act money coming in. That it would not be really prudent to make a change. Also, I really just feel, I've said this a few times this year, but it's been a really tough year for kids and families. And we really need to hit the ground running with everything we've got in the fall. So I would like to just keep our budget as stable as possible. And I think that we owe it to the kids and families to do that. So I would advocate for not making any changes right now. And for sure, if things change dramatically between now and town meeting, we can, I'm sure everybody would be happy to move numbers down. But I think for the time being, I would say no change.
I would propose that if we do see numbers that can help us offset our, I don't want to say draining, I want to say reduction, reducing of a, of reserves. I would like to apply them there.
So what would be in your opinion, because this is my learning opportunity? What would be in your opinion, a benchmark of a value that is worth starting to do that? Where is the flexibility? How much of the flexibility is needed?
So you're asking the wrong girl because I'm the one who's I worry about reserves. I worry about what you're seeing on that other sheet of what happens if you keep eating out of reserves. And then we want to go and fix Essex Elementary and our credit rating is not what it could be. So, you know, we need those, we need those dollars to maintain Essex Elementary until we're ready to rebuild. And we've got a whole list of those capital costs, so, you know. I don't know.
Yeah, so it makes sense to build back our reserves and it makes sense to provide our full educational program and all of the supports that we're going to need in the fall.
Yeah.
So bearing all that in mind, I would say make no changes right this minute. But keep a close eye on it. That doesn't have to be the last thing anybody says.
Sarah, I agree with you because I think there are still some, as we just talked about, there's still some more information on the come. You know, we might get some information from the towns. So, you know, I don't think this has to be written in stone right now, but I think it makes sense to stay where we are.
Okay, Pam, is that enough?
It's exactly what we need and we'll do what we always do, which is we are going to continue to study the numbers, study the revenue streams. Maybe we'll get some good news from the state that we weren't anticipating in terms of chapter 70. Not anticipating it, but if there is something to be found, we're going to find it. And if we can reduce the numbers, we will. I just think we've got so many things stacked behind us that reducing that number has slipped in my mind in priority from previous years.
Great. Is there any school committee comment? We only have a few meetings left this year, so.
Yeah, so, oh, I'm new. So do we take the summer off? Is that how this works? Because we did last year. So if there's something like that, it'd be nice for me to know.
New people, Teresa, most of the committees, but new people meet twice a week.
You're so cute.
Amazing.
We usually have, we try to have a retreat over the summer, actually. So we'll see what we end up with.
I can put some dates together. I think what we're going to try to do is most of our school stuff get done by end of June and then maybe August and have a little hiatus from too many meetings in July, if that works. But once the new members come on, we can look at schedules.
Sounds good. But Teresa, we mostly take the summer.
Teresa, for your planning, we typically start back the third Tuesday in August. That starts up our regular meeting schedule again. So we get some things done before school starts.
Isn't it unusual time to come on? Thank you for clarifying that.
I'll have the full calendar for you next session.
Gail, who is our clerk, pointed out that she's never met Teresa. She said we're going to, she'll be meeting four new members. And I was like, no, no, only two new members. But she said she's never met Teresa and Matt, which is crazy.
So is the intent of the committee to finish this year virtually and then see what comes of things in the summer and the fall?
I think that's a safe bet for the moment. I think maybe that'd be a good topic for the retreat is we've had good engagement over the past year, how to manage rather than some sort of simultaneous engagement or public broadcast.
Yeah, I mean, we've been having.
We'll have. Go ahead.
Well, except for me talking over Ken, I think the meetings go pretty smoothly. But it would be nice to be back in person. But I think, I think I'm saying the same thing, Ken, is that we want to make sure that we continue to be able to have remote participation because it's been so great to have so many people.
I agree. So I can kind of think a little bit about how we would, about how we can structure for a hybrid, basically. Continue to have remote access for people, but maybe start to gather together in the fall.
Yeah, fortunately, the teachers have really explored that for us this year, so we should be in a good position.
A lot of people who will train me up, I'm sure.
I have a question about, and this is not to be answered today, but it's just, you know, you talked about learning loss earlier. And I wondered if you could talk to us at our next meeting or future meeting about how we're measuring learning loss and how we're planning on addressing that in 2021, 22.
Well, I do have a comment about learning loss, which is I'm somewhat annoyed about the media conversation about learning loss because my inbox is flooded with all the newest tools we can purchase to remediate learning loss. So I think there's a segment that's turning this into a new cottage industry. Not that it is something that we should not be conscious of. I think, I tie two things together. We have to be aware that this has been an untypical, a very strange year in what will be a year and a half for our kids. So they haven't learned in their typical fashion, but they've learned lots of new things that we are never going to measure. So to tie being very attentive to where they are in a typical and traditional academic continuum with all the silver linings and new skills that they picked up, I think is important. And I don't think anyone has an advantage over anyone else because everyone has experienced this differently, depending on what system you're in, how your family's chosen to handle that. That being said, we have been running our traditional benchmark assessments throughout the year, particularly at the elementary. And through those, we have not identified that the kids have any significant, have not lost any significant ground.
Yeah, and I didn't, I'm sorry that.
No, 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 Annie, it's not you. It's just, it's a trigger for me right now because you're hearing this all over and it's being discussed, but it's not really being discussed with much depth or a very broad scope.
And I have no products to sell you.
But I think we have to be aware of it, that kids have had different levels of supports in the home and it may have impact on how they can progress and how they're going to reintegrate when they come back. But I have not heard concerns out of our traditional benchmarking process as of yet.
Will there be a time when we have a revisit of some of that? I know the elementary principals had brought it up and I had constituents mention the idea of, okay, well, when we take averages, it may not look like it. Is this a case where kids either really did well or really did terrible and how that looks? So just something to help us spell out what we're really looking at.
Sure. And I think we're trying to wait and see what they're going to do with the MCAS and how they're going to define the MCAS. I have been an advocate for letting it go this year. I think it's not a great situation to bring kids in and then put them into a testing environment. They have already agreed that the juniors will not be held accountable for their competency determination. So I think there is some, we're not quite sure how that's going to land yet. But if we do use that, that will give us some information. But I know the team is also working on a benchmarking plan for next year. So we will have Julie here before the end of the year. I think she's scheduled for June, along with Craig, to come back to talk about kind of the year in review and some of the work that they've been doing on SCAR with the kids.
Thank you. Any other comment before we say goodnight?
Just going to roll back very briefly to the one on the, on the public meeting. I suspect MASC and I don't know if there were changes to open meeting law that kind of allowed boards and committees to meet remotely. So I suspect there may be a broader conversation at the state level. Pam and Avi, you may see that or hear that through your mass or the organization you have, Avi.
Yeah, Baker did put in special legislation to allow it to happen. I'm hoping that through the advocacy of MASC and MASF, that we can make the case for increased participation for keeping it. You know, the rule can go back to we have to convene in an open public session for folks that want to attend. But I think, you know, we see people doing lots of different things while they're watching or listening to the meeting. And I think that's great because they're getting the information.
Yeah.
And we've always designed these to be an information delivery system, so it's great.
Yeah, I think Avi's group, I just remembered, is more fun as Mazbo. Am I correct?
Yep.
That's just Association of School Business Officers with a cool name. Thank you. Sorry. I'm done, Sarah.
That's okay. Would anybody like to move to adjourn the meeting?
I'll do that.
Second, Warnock.
All right, Annie?
Yes, yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Yes, and I'm a yes. Good night, everybody.
Thank you all, be well.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for everybody, to everybody who came and listened.